Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December 19th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the exits around the room. And now drumming is we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It felt like a holiday party had already started here for a moment. The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Enclave Solar Farm. The applicants are seeking site plan and special use permit approval to locate a solar array at a site that we know is the Enclave where they will -- we previously approved a re-subdivision for 52 family homes. Make it a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Welcome back. What would you like to present tonight?
So basically, just a brief rundown of the project. It's a 2.6 megawatt ground-mounted solar array proposed to be located in the 25.01 acre parcel that was recently subdivided from the Enclave residential subdivision to the south. The project's location is unique as it's set far back from Cream Street and near the utility infrastructure that's required for the project. The location of the site will provide a healthy vegetative buffer to remain around the majority of the site, so there will be very minimal, if any, visual impact to the surrounding properties. The project will utilize the existing emergency access road that will access the site from Cream Street and go down south to the Enclave subdivision. Since the last meeting, we've reached out to U.S. Fish and Wildlife. We got an email from them after the meeting on the 20th, basically saying that the site would either require a bog turtle survey or we could
Thank you.
Go through the whole list of mitigation measures that they provided, which Ken is distributing to you right now. Basically says on the second page that if the study was done and no habitat found, then no further measures were required to be met. So we had the bog turtle survey done, and it's been submitted to U.S. Fish and Wildlife. My last correspondence with them is that they're still reviewing it. Yes, they have a 30-day window.
The lengthy assessment that it is, they're still reviewing.
Yeah. The data sheets are there, so they're reviewing that and hoping to hear back from them ahead of next month's meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Before I go to the consultants, and let me just start, that we still have -- we're still waiting to hear back from the Department of Environmental Conservation. We circulated back on November 7th, I believe, so we could conclude secret because it's been past three days, but I think that we were not going to until we have verified analysis or verified comments from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. As I mentioned earlier, the last I saw when I was looking at U.S. Fish and Wildlife's database, they showed Dutchess County is also being habitat for Indiana and northern longer bats. And as I mentioned to you guys, a prior Solar Farm had to do an echolocation study, basically a sonar study, at night to make sure that it wouldn't affect them in case they had to go in during the tree removal time. You guys, I don't think have to do that because you're not removing many trees, so -- but we'll find out from that they still have the concern about the bats. I thank you both personally, but I want to put it in the record for providing the information based on Mr. Pickett's request last time about the oil. You provided all the data we wanted to. It's commodity seed oil, which I puzzled that through, as I said, but it's soybeans and everything, so it is vegetable oil in essence.
For the transformer.
Yes. But I thought it was very nice that you provided that for us, and I did make sure that Ms. Moss had a chance to read it because she'd be the one who might freak out if there was any kind of leakage ever there. In addition, I went through myself, I went through all your new submission, and I went through the decommissioning plan, as I mentioned. It'll be up to the board, but I believe that what we would try to do is follow what we did last time. You proposed that there could be a surety performance bond of $84,000 or something thousand dollars. I think 84167 sticks in my head, but I think what I would certainly encourage the board to do is instead of having that renewed every year or two years and have to be tracked by the town staff, it's better, I think, if we have you enter into the agreement with the town board that there's a memorandum of understanding or something so that if it's not decommissioned by you guys, that the town could do it and just attach as a tax lien the cost, because that seems to make the most sense to me, and it keeps your energy costs lower. And that's why we're doing these reviews, because we, I think you may have heard them last time because the group lingered, but we have five more applications right now in front of us for solar. That would be a total of seven, so that makes my heart feel really good because Hyde Park is producing, are going to be producing green energy. So that's all I have for the moment. Let me start with Ms. Axelsson.
I did email an update to the planning board, so I'm not going to repeat any of that. Then I had a discussion with Michael today because there's kind of a lot in the pike right now, and so I'm going to put this one at the front, try to get this review out the end of the week, and then, you know, I would suggest that we be allowed to do offline consultation to clear up the remaining things.
Always.
And it's up to Victoria, but I don't know if it's possible the next time that this is on the agenda if we can do both negdeck and conditional approval if everything's all lined up.
Depends on U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
It really does. It depends on them. I'm just trying to think if there were any other -- so we're waiting to, you know, from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, we need to hear NISEDEC. I don't, I think if we heard from the county or we do, they'll
We did. Matter of little concern, no comments.
No concern, no comments. Okay.
It's really DEC, and I'm surprised they haven't given us a response.
Yeah.
But then they may be busy as well, like we all are right now in this county.
Yeah, so much of it is plan detail-type stuff.
And by the way, just for the board, when Liz said she spoke to me, because our last meeting was four and a half hours, and we had so much on the agenda, it takes while Liz has to provide, you know, comment memos for each one of these, and they take a little while to go back through and do code check, et cetera, so we were talking about how to prioritize them. And Enclave got moved to the front of the pack, you'll be happy to know.
Thank you.
And I have to confess, the one thing I don't really review thoroughly anymore is the SWIP. I don't always make, I'm not an engineer, so I can't always follow all of it. I'm full confession, so I believe we're still waiting for SWIP comments as well.
That's already on.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's, that's
Mr. Sotero, any comments? Ms. Pauldor, any comments?
The decommissioning plan map notes didn't exactly match the plan, and so I was going to ask that you take a look back at the map notes and
Microphone, please.
Oops.
Sorry. I was stating that the map notes on the decommissioning plan were a little bit inconsistent with the decommissioning plan and with the statute, so just make sure those map notes line up with what our code requires.
Good catch. Let me stretch to my left. Ms. Weiser?
I have nothing to add.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett?
Thank you for the information on the fluids. It was really informative. I went through and looked at other sites, and it seems like there's never been any issues, you know, any place coming off of utility supplies like this. And I mentioned it to the fire department, and they were just like, it was no issue to them too, so thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, just going back one comment.
Yes.
The decommissioning plan included salvage?
And we removed that.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Yeah, we played this update, we removed.
Yeah, actually, I was happy to see that, that there wasn't the salvage claim in the middle of the estimate, so.
Okay, then. No further comments.
Thank you. Ms. Wasser?
No further comment or questions.
Ms. Dexter?
I just had a question to Ken. Is there any chance I could get a site visit maybe between now and
Yes.
Are you, are you back and running with trucks?
No, but yes.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Okay.
Separate subject, but
Okay.
Not a fun process, but
We can work something out? Okay.
We can get it.
Would anyone else from the board like to do a sidewalk?
Yeah, because I know some people have seen it, some people have not.
I'd like to go on that.
And I'm always happy to go back. It's a nice site to go through. Do you guys want to try for any particular weekend?
No, I just find one that Ken, Ken is around.
Is there one you're thinking, so we can
No, I just would like to try to get that taken care of.
It's supposed to be warm this weekend is the reason why I'm saying that.
Right.
Warm-ish compared to what it's been like.
Maybe, yes, I mean, yeah, Sunday might be better than Saturday as far as
I'm free Sunday, too?
Okay, I'll see if I can
Because it might still be raining on Saturday.
That's right. That's right.
Sunday might
It's going to be muddy on Sunday most likely.
Right.
Because it's going to rain a lot.
A lot.
On Friday, right.
Friday.
It's better than snow a lot.
Yes, exactly. Exactly.
It's a good way to see any wetness.
Yes. There were, some of us went, we did sidewalks, had the other, from the other applications that are before us as well, and, which was fun, but it was wet that day, too, believe me. So we'll just put on waders.
Boots.
Yeah, boots and waders.
I don't think it has not been wet in the last, like
Right, right.
Three days.
So Ken, do you want me to email you? You have everybody's emails up here, too, probably.
Yeah, I'll just check. What time are we thinking if Sunday would work for everyone?
Probably earlier than, than later, so we did 10 o'clock. I mean, that would be
Yeah.
It's early enough, it wouldn't take that long, and we'll all be free up for the rest of the day.
Just checking tonight with the other cars that day.
That would be great.
I'll run a little late, probably not 10:30, but I can
Oh, right, 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 right. Yeah, no, 10:30 would be fine.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
No further comment. Thank you.
Ms. Napoli?
No comment, except to say I'm so glad it's finally coming near the end, and happy holidays.
Thank you, too.
So I think the last thing that I'll, you already had my earlier comments, is that you've asked for several waivers, but I didn't find anything in the narrative to justify why we should be waiving them. Can you just write up something quick? Because it's a legal nicety, you know, I like to keep everything so that there's no way possible to lose a lawsuit, just in case there would be one, like I think there would be. Let me then open this up to the public. Would anyone like to speak about this application? There being none, would you like us to adjourn this to the second meeting of January the 16th, or that gives U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service?
Yeah.
Because I think that we're just going to keep
Holiday.
Yep.
Make it a motion to adjourn this to
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Yes.
January 16th.
On favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And
No, it'd be a Wednesday.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll review, I'll review the email in the meantime, and Liz will have her comments out, I hope, at the end of the week, because there'll be some time off next week for everybody. In the meantime, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas.
Looking forward to seeing you in 2019. And I probably will see you this Sunday.
Yep.
Unless the powers that be specify otherwise, so
Not, not, you should be able to
Great. Thanks again. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Do, too.
By the way, I think that's a good, that's a good sign that you didn't hear a lot of comments from the board.
Pretty good.
The next item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Belvedere Inn. The applicants are seeking an extension of time to complete construction, because they've already started it in through there, so make it, in through making a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander is here to represent the applicant. Mr. Alexander, in his application, as I noted last week, submitted a list of all the activities that have been undertaken to date, and I want, as I mentioned last weekend, too, there's a lot of complicating factors in through here that have kept this from being completed. And I understand, I may be stepping on your toes, but I understand that there was discussion about keeping the pool, closing the pool, keeping the pool, closing the pool, keeping the pool, removing the pool, and apparently, right now, we are keeping the pool.
No more than I do on the latest version of that.
This is, this is from Ms. Moss and Mr. Westermeyer, so they're, the Department of Health needs, there's a lot of things that we're moving, again, in through here that will take time to work through, so they definitely do need some more time. First, make it a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments from consultants? Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Ms. Panarela, do you want to come speak?
No, I'm just curious as to what's going on, you know, how the progress is going.
Slow.
Yeah. And I was wondering if they're
Do you want to come up and just speak in the microphone?
If you come up, could you please? Well, we're in a public hearing, and so we need this on the record.
I was just curious, like
Um, excuse me. Could you please give us your name and
Oh, Patricia Panarela.
And your address?
8 Old Route 9, Statsburg, 12580.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, I mean, I know that it's taking a while, it always does, to get things up and rolling, but there's a couple of things that concern me as just a neighbor, and one of the things is the condition of the road and whether or not you plan to have anybody plow the road so that in the wintertime, when the snow is up, I know one of the neighbors back there has been trying to fix the road over and over again because it washes out. It's probably part of the problem, but there's really, really deep, deep holes there now. And, you know, they, even if it would be just some heavy gravel or something in there, so, because I, I know that everybody slows down to get through the dips and whatnot, but it's getting to be really, really bad.
And we're about to get into a range of
Yeah. So can I ask which road
This is a shared driveway, this is a shared driveway. I believe that's what you're referring to.
Yeah.
Sorry, driveway and not a road.
Not When I heard road.
It's not a public road, no. So it's, when you, I believe that to get to your house, you would go through the back area that people sometimes use as an exit. If they're coming around the front of the building, you go out the exit, you do a loop.
So right between the house and the lake?
Yes, that driveway, the lake, the
So that provides access to multiple
Right. And then if you, you could take a right.
I have to look at the common
Could you please use the microphone? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I think the best thing for us, for us to do is for me to talk to Zach tomorrow, let him know that it's unraveled a little bit more again and see what his plans are, and then I can get through Cynthia, or Zach already has your information, I think, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll, either he'll get to you or I'll get to you in the next couple of days, and we'll address, I hear what you're saying.
Everybody, you know, is concerned about it. I mean, we all know that it's there, but if an ambulance were to come up there, you know, or to go back and forth, it would be, you know, now what I do is I drive through the parking lot so that I can avoid the two big divots, because I know they're there, but somebody that doesn't know, they could probably screw up their car pretty bad.
Okay. I, candidly, I just need to get a handle on the issue. I'm not factually up to speed.
Yeah.
And really, the better person is to have Zach or Warren give you a call.
I'm sure they know that it's there.
Warren Temple Smith, DC Architect. Yeah, so part of the other, just to get at it, unless you had another comment
No, not at all.
Just to help, help you is, we had a lot of time working through the water line issue out there, and that just ate up an incredible amount of time. And we went a friendlier route than we could've, and it just took an incredible amount of time to get everyone involved, I'm trying to do this in the fairest way possible, to get everyone involved to understand that we were doing the right thing and a good thing. And it just took a lot of time to get there, and eventually, the water department, DCWAI, saw that's what we were trying to do, and they helped us along, and we finally actually got fully signed agreements and everything's
I think that
It just took an inordinate amount of time, believe it or not. It wasn't back and forth on the drafting, it was just really more getting people to be understanding of where we were.
Yeah, but in all fairness, the record that I have with your company is not really kind and considerate, et cetera, et cetera, so
I can only talk about
It would lead me to believe that I shouldn't be able to trust somebody on face value. That's why I had an attorney look at everything, so
Look, understood. I mean, really, right now, where we are is just trying to get a renewal on what's there. We're moving forward, we need a little bit more time, and, you know, I don't think it can be held against us that a third party basically delayed us for at least six months, you know, of this time, so, you know, and I think that's really where we are. So to go at risk and spend money when we're getting delayed by a third party who we can't control, I think would have been a mis
Who's that?
Well, the water authority, if
I think you might want to just
Yeah, I'm just trying to be
No offense?
I'm just trying to be fair, and it's your meeting, chairman.
You can certainly discuss this outside if you'd like to afterwards, but if that's the issue is, you'll
Yeah, we're going to investigate and find out what's going on.
Thank you.
And candidly, I haven't looked at the common driveway usement agreement to see whose responsibility is, even if it's ours, even, or it's everybody collectively has to put into the committee.
Right, and I don't, we haven't seen that either, so it's not something that we, that's been submitted, as far as I know, to us, but now that you brought it up, we might want a copy of that, correct?
Sure. I'd like one for the final, in case questions come up.
We all, it's, it's there from
Way back when?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'll get it together.
Thank you.
Just make certain of that. Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Panarela?
No.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. It's always good to see you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Thank you.
There being none, make it a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And who has this resolution? I do.
Resolution granting extension of time to complete construction of the site plan and reissuing special use permit approval to Belvedere Inn, resolution number 16-29B. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby reaffirms its findings in resolution number 16-29 made pursuant to section 108-8.4 of the zoning law. Be it further resolved pursuant to section 108-9.6B of the zoning law, the planning board hereby grants a one-year extension of time in which to complete the project in accordance with the site plan and obtained certificates of occupancy to March 9, 2020. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby grants special use permit to permit an expansion of the non-conforming scale by up to 9.5% as shown on the site plan. Be it further resolved that the following general conditions are imposed. One, all required fire inspections must be completed in order to permit the continued operation of the main building, the Belvedere Mansion, to the satisfaction of the town building inspector. Two, all documentation submitted to Dutchess County Health Department relating to the onsite wells, either to the properly, either to properly abandon them or to properly maintain them, will also be submitted to the town engineer for review and comment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just a bit of discussion. Mr. Alexander, since you weren't the attorney on this originally, the second condition, there is an onsite well which you're hooked up to town water, and as far as the DCWAI's policy is that once you're on town water, you have to decommission your wells, but there is discussion or a proposal that that maybe could be used for irrigation, so we just want to make sure that if that's what's going to be used, that's what that's about, not about the agreement that was signed between your client and the third party. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Ms. Alexander, have a Happy New Year.
You, too. Thank you, everybody. Take care.
Always nice to see you.
See you in 2019.
We'll see you in 2019.
God willing, take care.
Aye.
The next item on the, oop, the agenda is a continued public hearing for the Locust Rural Event Venue, same owner as Belvedere. Make it a motion to reopen this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As a reminder, the applicants are seeking approval under our rural events law to be able to conduct events, large-size events, at the site. They're still, I believe, discussing how to create and maintain a secondary emergency access point, and there's still apparently no movement forward. We had a letter today requesting that they, we adjourn this to February 20th. I don't see any reason why not to. But first, would anyone from the public like to speak about this application? I don't think so. I think your new life church, so there being none, make it a motion to adjourn this to
So moved. Sorry.
February 20th.
2019.
I'm not too much of a hurry, am I?
I have, I have
Second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Gentlemen, come on up. Our next item is a workshop on New Life Church. This is a new application, the first time the board is seeing it. The site is located at 50 Circle Drive, which would be, just as you go into that neighborhood, the first former residence to the left.
The old daycare.
The old daycare center. As a bit of background, this was purchased initially by some doctors to be turned into a doctor's office, but that wasn't actually allowed under the new zoning when it was created, so, yep, but this is allowed with the site plan and special use permit. And let me turn it over to, can you both say your name for the record for us?
My name is Joseph Taylor.
Yeah, you can use the separate one. It should be on.
My name is Pastor Samson Mumbo, pastor of the New Lives Church.
You're going to have to repeat that one more slowly for me. Sorry.
Pastor Samson Mumbo.
Oh, Samson?
Yes, Samson Mumbo.
Thank you, Reverend Mumbo. That would be pastor? Pastor? Thank you.
Mumbo.
Let me turn it over to you, and you could, I mean, we've all read your narrative, but[1483.32] Let me turn it over to you. I mean, we've all read your narrative, but we, our meetings are televised, so it's the first time that people in the audi, or at the television viewing audience, we have a chance to hear what you're proposing to do. Let me turn it over to you guys.
The church is proposing to change the existing, or the previously existing daycare into a place of worship. That's the objective of it, to change this to a place of worship.
And how often do you have services there?
Currently, the building is utilized about two to three days a week, maximum about five hours average on Saturdays. On Wednesdays, about two hours. And we're hoping that, we're hoping to use the five days a week, that would be very productive, but right now it's used on average about two days a week.
Thank you. And do you have regular, regular hours of service, like a, say, at eleven on Sundays or six P. M. on Wednesdays or?
Yes. On Saturdays is from nine A. M. to, it could go up to, what, three, four P. M.?
Three or four P. M.
Yes.
I take, I'm assuming this is a relatively small congregation based on the number of pews I saw inside and the overall size of the building?
Yes.
And your parking calculations, I'm assuming, were done. I couldn't see exactly how you made the number, but it's, our code, it's parking guidelines and they're based on number of pews, so I'm assuming that's how you got to the number you show?
Yes, about two point five individuals per parking space.
Thank you.
There, there was some information on, I think, your site that was showing five, a parking space per five individuals, and I thought that was pretty, pretty, pretty high. Is that true? Is that?
These are, well, I was gonna say, these are guidelines. It's really up to the board and the applicant to work out what we think is the best. And if you're hoping to be using it in the future more days, I'm assuming that you would not be necessarily growing the congregation, you'd just be having them there more often?
Well, six people per pew.
Yes. Right now, the, the proposed seating area is actually more than the actual congregation, which is
I saw the pews. How many people can fit into this building if your congregation grows?
Ninety.
So everything's being designed for about ninety congregants?
Yes.
The reason why I was bringing this up is if you ever needed more parking, right now you would be required to come back for another site plan amendment, which would involve fees, et cetera.
Yes.
What we often do to work with applicants and to plan on future growth is if you want, if you, if there's an area that you think might be allotted for future parking, we could review that now. It doesn't have to be made into parking. We call it banking of parking spaces, and then it would be already reviewed and approved so that if you needed to come back in later on and do parking, you wouldn't have to come through a site plan amendment. I'm trying to be cost sensitive for you because I understand that's an issue. It's always an issue with, with any religious organization.
And as religious people put that, I think we will succumb to what you just said by faith. And you, you want to grow, yes.
Well, most of them do, put it that way. So that's just something to put into your head, that if you, I believe, are you the engineer working on the project?
Yes, yes.
So if you want to, if there's an area you think that would need to have, that you could have additional parking, if you think that's gonna be something in the near future, distant future, again, it can be shown now. So my other comments, I think you're gonna hear this from the consultants, are, I'm not sure, but I believe there's some grading necessary that's not shown yet. I want to make sure the board evaluates landscaping we're required under our code and site plan to show screening between residential and non-residential uses. This is a non-residential use, and there actually has been no use because the daycare closed a long time ago. So, and under our current code, we require the screening. They propose some landscaping. It's not really detailed yet, but they, they proposed some, so the board should take a look at that. Also, there's a copse of trees that's to the west of the site that right now is very effective at screening, excuse me, to the east of the site that's right now very effective at screening. It's a big, thick, you know, kind of almost small bit of forest. If the board believes that's effective now, we might need to have a note on the map saying they can't do tree removal over a certain amount or something other than for the life, the health of the trees. I didn't see Americans with Disabilities Act parking, handicap parking, as commonly called, which needs to be shown. And then when we're ready to circulate, I think we'd be suggesting as a courtesy to circulate to Department of Health, the Fire Department, the Fire Inspector, and then this has to go to Dutchess County because it's located on a state highway or adjacent to a state highway under two thirty-nine M. But I think we're not quite ready to circulate yet, so let me start first with our consultants. Ms. Axel, send any comments?
No comments.
Mrs. Sotera?
Yeah. So I see you have a site plan in here that is drawing two of, two of two. I'm assuming that that's a concept type, type plan, but there's quite a bit more items that need to be added to it. You're gonna need to go look at Section one oh eight, four, four point five, and I think it's nine point four of the zoning code because that shows you all of the elements that have to be on a site plan that the planning board would approve unless you ask for a waiver that those specific items don't have to be on a site plan. So, you know, some of those are gonna include, as, as the chairman said, we're gonna need to see, you know, grading because I think the area you're adding, you know, the parking lot, you're gonna be slightly cutting into, according to the survey for the old daycare, it looks like you're gonna be cutting into, you know, a little bit of a hill. So we'll need to see, you know, the grades, how, you know, the drainage is gonna work, you know, erosion control. So there's quite a bit more items that need to be added to the site plan to conform to, you know, our code. So you're gonna have to go through and look in Section one oh eight for all the elements that need to be shown on a plan. There's not enough information now on the, on, you know, the plan for the, you know, for us to really review it and for the planning board, you know, to act on it. So have you done that, gone through, you know, the code at all, looked through the sections for site plan approval?
Some of it and the, when we had the first meetings with
Ms. Moss?
Ms. Moss.
Moss, yes. Ms. Moss, we went through that. And what, what we did was to minimize the disturbance to the existing condition now. So the ten parking spaces closest to the building are pretty much existing.
Well, there's no contour shown. There, there isn't anything shown, shown on your map, so it's hard to tell how it's gonna work.
Oh, the contours.
Yeah, you need to have, you need to have some kind of a base survey with elevations, you know, to work off. Now you, now, you know, you may be able to use, you know, the prior, the prior survey that was part of the Vanderbilt daycare approval. I mean, that's got
Yeah, they're gonna remain, right?
That's what we're using.
Topography on it, but
Yes.
You know, topography isn't, isn't shown on the plan here, so it's hard to evaluate.
Oh, okay. So you were
You use the same surveyor. Can he certify to it and add it to this plan as well?
I mean, I'd be glad, I'd be glad to meet with you, but there's, there's, you know, a lot more information that has to be shown on this plan. This is not, this is not a typical site plan that the planning board, you know, would look at to, like, approve. There's just more, there's quite a bit more information that has to be shown. And again, if you go through the sections of the code that, you know, I stated that says you, that you have to have this, 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 and this.
Yes.
And then, you know, once again, you have the ability to ask for a waiver that those items not be shown, you know, because whatever the reason is, but
Now, I'm assuming we will ask for a waiver that those items not be shown only if they don't apply. I mean, if, if
That's correct.
If they apply, right, exactly, right.
So we, like, the detail is required, so we put the detail there.
Yeah.
And now with respect to the contours, the, the contours are showing on this map. Now, if the, it would be easy to transfer the contours here in that way, you know. When you look at it, you'll see that it is transferred there. It'll be the same information in two different places.
Okay.
I, I didn't think it was necessary
Are you the engineer? I'm sorry. Are you
Yes.
The engineer? Okay, you're the engineer for the project? Okay.
I, I didn't think it was necessary to, to duplicate it since the information was already here.
Well, it's not here. It's on the old, it's on the old plan, the Vanderbilt daycare plans.
I have a question. Is this plan as-built? Is this an as-built drawing after the building? Because it says proposed for the daycare in nineteen ninety-three.
This is not an as-built.
So this may not even reflect
May not even be accurate.
what was done because it doesn't seem to be as-built. So that was my question. There'd be no purpose in just transferring these over. You'd have to shoot current grades, I would think.
The building and the existing parking lot
Those are proposed grades. I don't know what's as-built.
Actually built. Yes.
Right, but this drawing that shows the grades is before anything was built. It says proposed, proposed building, proposed parking. So when a project is complete, things may not be as they were when they were proposed. So, you know, sometimes there's an as-built drawing at the completion. Maybe there's, maybe there is one on file.
I would, I would, I would say there, there has to be one because now the project is physically, it's there.
Well, we don't, we
No, back in those days
We don't typically require an as-built that shows all the
Nothing this small.
The contours, yeah.
We do require as-bills on certain larger sites. That's what we always require now, but back, this was approved back in nineteen ninety-three, and I've been up here a long time. I've gone through minutes from back then. I can guarantee you, it was a little less sophisticated, we'll call it that way, um, review process back then. So we know more now.
The best thing, the best thing would probably be to contact the surveyor who had prepared the information initially, which is Mr. Dalbo, who's still in business, in Hyde Park. And my guess is that he could take the old information, go out and shoot some additional grades of what's, of what's out there and come up with, you know, a survey for you to work off that, that we know is accurate.
And he's familiar, he's familiar with this, this planning board?
Yes, very much so. So Pete, there, there could be stormwater issues at this site. Am I correct?
Well, I mean, we need to look at it. That's what part of, that's part of what we're asking for now.
I'm not even sure you were around in ninety-three up here.
I, this was, I'm going to tell you something. This was the, one of the very first jobs that I worked on when I became the engineer for the town. It was around nineteen ninety-four.
Wow.
And so it was one of the first jobs that I worked on.
So you have been around that long, see?
I have been around that long. Luckily for me.
I would, so
But I'd be glad to help, help, you know, the gentleman out, but it's just, you know, we know what has to be on here just for us to prove it.
Pastor Mumbo, so actually, when you went through with Tad at an initial meeting, there's a checklist that you included here?
Yes.
Those are basically all the elements that are required. Tad usually works with you to say, you can request a waiver. She'll put a W. on for what waiver you can request. I noticed when I read through this that she didn't have that on there, but she does have add, 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 and those are some of the things that you still have to add. For example, landscaping, you have it shown, but it's not labeled, and you have flower beds, but it's not labeled what the specimens are. That's required under our code. Unless it's gonna be just annuals, like petunias or something, you just, just say annual beds, not perennial, but we need to know it's there because we're not allowed to see certain things installed that are invasives. Normally, our, our site plans, we require lighting to be shown, any lighting, along with photometric plans. That's not shown. You could request a waiver, but if you're gonna be, if it's gonna be private light that you're adding, the board would want to see that because you're a non-residential use that's basically entering into a neighborhood. So, and if you're not changing the exterior of the structure, you can ask for a waiver, say, of the architectural features because it's already existing. But this will go through to, you can show, you can go through it and see what all you need to request waivers on. In addition, and I'm kind of over, leaping over Pete's rest of his comments, but you're also seeking, I believe, a special use permit, and there's criteria for that that must be addressed in narrative and through there. You have a little bit of it at the end, which I believe that, I think this is what you wanted to be for your narrative, but I don't think it hits the specific criteria, it doesn't address all the criteria itself. That's all from my comments. Pete, let me go back to you again.
One of the things you have on your short form environmental assessment form is you have on the description of the action. It says major improvements to the interior of existing building and parking lot. I mean, are you planning on making major improvements to the building?
Uh, no. There's, there's, there is zero renovation proposed to the exterior of the building and on plan.
It says here to the interior. Major, major improvements to the interior of the building.
Uh, no. The Plan One of Two shows no proposed changes in these areas that are, like, I'm not sure if you have, have that planned, and the change is in the sanctuary area.
Okay. Again, I'm just asking because it, that's what it, you know, it says on the forms.
It shouldn't say major even to the parking area, basically. It's not a major transformation.
Are you gonna have, are you gonna have kitchen facilities there?
The existing
Is there, I don't know what's Okay, so you're not gonna go add any new kitchen facilities? What, what I'm, what I'm thinking about is if you're gonna do cooking, then we'd have to look at a potential grease trap so it doesn't impact the septic. But if you're just, if you're just gonna be warming, you know, food and that kind of stuff, that's, that's probably what the daycare used it for.
No kitchen.
And the other thing, as the, as the chairman mentioned, when we have a change of use, we typically would refer to the Dutchess County Department of Health, and I can go tell you that they're going to probably ask you to compare what the septic system was approved for before, for the daycare, for X amount of flow versus with your new use based upon the number of people and that kind of stuff to, to compare, you know, the flows to make sure that you're not gonna have more flow than what was approved before. So that's something that you should be looking at because they will ask you, ask you for that. So, I mean, I don't know if it's, I mean, I can write up a short, you know, letter, but it seems like it might be better if, you know, the gentleman took, took a look at the code, and I'd be glad to sit down with him and Tad one more time. Maybe we could show him an example of a smaller site plan that we've approved to say, hey, look, here's typically the information that's on there and go through, you know, the checklist. Personally, I think that would be more beneficial than
Yep.
I agree.
Agreed.
Um, Mr. Taylor, do you, what Mr. Sotera is referring to be, we call them offline meetings, so meeting during the day informally here usually so we could discuss and go through all the aspects of what's missing and how to move forward. Are you available during the days? I believe you might be from Westchester, I was told.
I live in, I live in Hyde Park actually, but I work
That's easy.
But, but I, I'm not in Hyde Park during the day. I, I'm a permanent engineer in Rockland County.
Rockland, not Westchester.
Yes.
So you're not clo, you're not even close to Hyde Park during the day?
No.
That might be a problem for a meeting unless you could take some time off.
No, I mean, I, I make plans and scare
I mean, we could do it, we could do it early in the morning, like Tad's, Tad's normally in early. I mean, I can make it early, then you can be on your way. I mean, we could, you know, we'll work around it.
And I'm happy to be there too. I'm sure that if anybody from the board would like to, see, we're getting nods. We try to help you in other words. That's what we're trying to do is to make sure
Oh, realize that. I mean, it would be the same as the meeting with Kathleen.
Kathleen or Tad.
We call it Tad.
One difference is, is that Ms. Moss is not directional and other people can be, if that makes sense.
Well, she doesn't speak for the board, so she gives you, she's helping you prepare the application, but then the board sometimes wants additional information. So she can only give you that initial preparation?
Yes.
That's why it's valuable to have one of us there as well, Mrs. Sotera.
Yes. I mean, because there are plans that I review or do based on, based on the word, the magnitude. More is required, some more is not required, and you, you don't want to over-design or have time to just draw things up and charge people for it. So I, I give what was necessary. And on here, actually, there is a set of, there is a map here from Michael Dalbo that is recent and
How recent?
It's dated twenty seventeen.
Wait, did he, he drew this? He drew, no. This was your site plan, right, J. P. G.?
Yes, the one of, one of two and two.
So which, which one are you referring to?
We don't have what he's referring to.
Oh, you haven't given us that. It wasn't submitted.
Maybe you have a face survey and it's the work.
So that's more of an as-built that you have?
It's a survey.
You have an as-built.
We don't have what he's referring to.
You don't have it?
Right. That was not submitted.
Right.
You don't have these.
No, but you should, you should submit that or just bring it to an offline meeting. We can see, but that's not something that I've seen.
Well, that's just a boundary survey. It doesn't have any topography on it, but yes, it is
No topography or contours.
Yeah, so he did an updated, you know, survey for your church.
No one shot contours?
There is, there isn't any on here.
Does it have the building on there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So he's got a base, so it's just a matter of
Okay.
Mike, Mike taking his old information, going out and shooting some information right around like the building and just making a new
So for the twenty-six new parking spaces, that's what, right, is what you're looking for?
Uh, and, you know, the topo around where they're gonna add the new parking lot. I mean, this, this actually doesn't even
And that's what's in the study.
This doesn't even show the parking area really, you know, the limits of the block.
It, it doesn't show the parking spaces.
Well, we got a base at the start, but so
That's good.
So you, because the, the land really hasn't changed. Now, would it be acceptable if, based on the location of our parking space, parking space is here, when this is constructed or graded, we can take shots of the existing ground elevation and then the shots of the, the lowest point to indicate the flow.
What are you talking about? Afterwards? After you build it?
The board can't approve it until they've studied what you're proposing, so they need to see your design.
This would be before.
Okay.
Oh.
Yeah, that's fine.
After the fact would be meaningless to me.
Oh, I thought you said after. That's what
Oh, no. I mean, if we could
In other words, you wouldn't have to have Mr. Dalbo shoot topos for the whole site, just the area of disturbance that you're contemplating, which is the parking area?
Yes.
In essence. That's all that they're proposing.
Well, I mean, it's a large site. I don't think they need, only where you're disturbing.
And he has, I mean, Mike, Mike already has of the topo for
Yep.
most of, most of the site, so it's just basically taking some shots around, you know, the building to just get more accurate topography
Up to date.
to show what was built back then.
Okay.
That's all. It's, shouldn't be, shouldn't be that big of a deal.
No, and actually, we can give him these plans so he would know where to
Yes.
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 Because we're proposing here, the top of curb at one seventy and the bottom of curb one sixty-nine. So on here, it shows that it is draining to the existing place, but, so, yeah, we can have
Okay, I mean, I think, like I said, I think that the best thing is that for us after, you know, the holidays, that we get together and we'll get you going, we'll get you going on the right, right track.
Yes, that would be, that would be good.
That's all from me.
Ms. Pollard, any comments?
Um, I think in the materials and in, as part of the planning board's approval, we should just be clear throughout that we're reviewing it for a maximum of ninety people so that if the congregation does grow beyond that, at some point, you know, they come back in and we take another look at expanded parking and, and other issues.
Yes.
Second, the SECA regulations have recently been amended, effective January first, and reuse of an existing commercial structure is now type two. So I, I think we can talk internally about whether this is still considered commercial or not. I'm not clear on how long it's been closed. So
At least eight years.
But don't we still, do they, do they still have the four thousand square foot requirement?
They still have that as well. So
I would have considered this type two because their, the only addition is the small parking area.
Right.
So it's not being converted from residential to a commercial? So it's not being converted from residential to a commercial?
Cause it, well, it hasn't been residential.
It was commercial.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what I was looking for. So it's, it's been commercial and it's not changing, okay. So then I think we can call it a type two action. But still, we have to circulate for reports and recommendation to Department of Health and to county planning for 239M. Once we receive more complete plans. The county will reject plans that don't show the landscaping, the lighting, et cetera, so.
Right, your landscaping, you just refer to perennial and annuals, so we would need to see what perennials, what you're actually proposing. If that makes sense, if it's, if it's a, I didn't, maybe I, maybe I didn't see it. I didn't see a landscape key for what the shrubs are or trees or whatever you're proposing along Circle Drive. You would need to have something, there's a symbol for each, but I didn't find a, a symbol key.
Or a legend showing the actual.
Yes.
Right, what you're proposing.
Unless they're annuals and then.
And again, the screening that would be required, you, you've shown the five, whether they're shrubs or trees, but you would need to specify what those are so the board can effectively evaluate whether that's gonna provide proper screening. Because we have to look at all months of the year. And now that I'm looking at this even more closely, I believe now I see what you're saying. You've written, you've handwritten in the topo, the elevations, right? 167 to 168.6 to 170 to, I see. And you propose, it says self-binding gravel. Can you explain what that is for your surface of the parking area?
Self-binding gravels are, are from a quarry, they're, they're cut in a way so they don't spread. So they're at an angle, so when they're set in there.
Crushed stone, basically, so.
They kind of like interlock and.
Crushed stone then, basically angular stone, it's not, okay.
Not oil and chip.
It's not oil and chip, right?
No, no.
It's the most economical of the stones, so they're not graded, I guess, to different sizes and whatever and good material to pack down.
Self-binding will be that there's no other element that's binding.
Okay, that's, that's what confused me was self-binding, cause I couldn't think of gravel as binding without something to help it along. So this would then be a pervious, this would, rainwater would flow through it?
Yes.
Okay, that helps me along there as well.
So are, are you talking about three-quarter crushed stone or like an item four with fines in it?
It would, it would be something like item four, yeah.
So a stone goes in as well, fines?
In one driveway, I, I did, I used pea gravel and, and it worked, it was a smaller.
Pea, pea gravel's not really angular.
There's not angular, it was a smaller driveway and, and it held, held up and worked with some membrane in the bottom. But this would be like, it would be like item, item four because item four has different grades in it that.
Right, they're mixed.
Yes.
So it's, and it's a reasonable stone.
Yeah.
And you'll need to show snow storage area for when it's plowed. You can even say it's some of the parking area, we, it's a requirement of the code to show where snow will be stored, what's plowing happens. It could be, just make a little area.
Snow storage.
Snow storage.
Storage, storage area. Yes.
It's where your plows are gonna push it to.
Push the snow, where is it gonna, there's enough storage area, yes.
Mr. Troy, any other comments?
Nope, just once we get some more plans, we can start the referral process. The, the non-binding referral process.
That reminder to the board, they do show their sign. You don't have the letters identified as to the maximum height. In other words, on the sign here, you show the overall dimensions of the sign, it appears to comport, but letters, you need to show what the dimensions of the letters are as well. So we can make sure that they don't exceed 10 inches, that's what's allowed. I'm guessing it doesn't exceed it, but just, if you could just show that.
On, on here, what I did to satisfy that, I mean, it would be easier to add, but what I did to satisfy that, because this is to scale, 1 inch is 20 feet. The, the logo there is 10 inches. And because it's to scale, the other.
Everything else will be automatically smaller.
Yes.
I can see that, I'm just letting you know that Ms. Moss usually requires that they, they're labeled to just so she knows what the size is because, as I like to say up here, she's a strict constructionist, when your sign goes up, she'll be out there measuring to make sure they're the same size, I promise you.
Oh, we have, we have one more comment.
Yep.
If the engineer is to meet with the consultants, without the pastor present, we do need a letter of authorization.
Right.
Oh, right.
That you're authorized to represent the church.
Oh, yeah.
You can sign, it's like easy work.
Yes.
Thank you.
You wanna be here, right?
Pastor Mumbow, do you live in Hyde Park too or do you live close by?
I live in Kipsey.
Close by, okay, that can be made.
You don't want him on every, I mean, you don't wanna be on every phone call, I assume. Maybe you do.
Let me start to my right, Mr. Napoli, any comments?
So far, two brief ones, but first I want to thank you for coming to Hyde Park and I hope this project gets underway at a nice speed for you. I do want to question the, the fact that you're not going to be utilizing the kitchen. Does that mean that there is an existing residential stove there? Are you removing it?
It, we have a residential kitchen, but I don't think we have the plan to remove it. Either way, we don't use it anyway, but we are not planning to remove it unless it's a requirement.
So you're gonna leave the stove there but not use it?
We not use it.
It may end up being a requirement because stoves in commercial structures have certain venting requirements.
I'm sorry.
All right, there we go. I was saying it, it may end up that it's required to be moved by the building department or Department of Health. So that's an ongoing conversation.
Now, if, if our comment will influence your decision, what we would do, we would leave the kitchen there, but not use it commercially. It wouldn't be commercially used.
Were you planning on using it commercially? I thought you said earlier you weren't, oh.
We just specify that there's no need or plans to use the kitchen commercially. Besides, I, I'm not sure if the current design can be used commercially. It's a residential kitchen that was used to heat up food and, and, and there are children in the congregation and mothers with children who may want to heat up something, but.
Well, some, some of that'll come out when it gets to the building department as part of the building.
Yeah.
Permit, because obviously the codes were different back in 94, 95, so.
As I said, we'll be doing a courtesy referral to Department of Health, just cause it's a new year, that's what they request of us. Back to Mr. Napoli, further comments?
Just one other quick question. I didn't notice, but I could not, I'm, been observant enough, is there an emergency exit?
Yeah, we have four emergency exits. We do have.
The signage and all?
Yes, the signs and everything.
Thank you.
I think it's by the pulpit, if I saw correctly, there's an exit that goes off.
Four, four exits.
That's what I thought.
It's my fault for not noticing, I'm sorry.
Mr. Oliver, any comments?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to the new plan when, after you meet with Mr. Sotero and, and figure out the details. And I'm also just making a note about the stone, you know, to consider during snow removal in the winter time. You're gonna have a lot of cleanup in the spring if you use either, either the item four or the three-quarter stone. It's, it, though it does, it is angular and does lock together, it, it'll be a mess in the spring.
Yes, usually, I mean, for those driveways, if you plow it, you'll have to, you have to do some resurfacing, you know.
I, I mean, for a residential driveway is a little different than a commercial use.
Yes.
So you, you know, you're gonna have a different demand for clearing the parking lot for a commercial use versus a residential driveway. So just, just to be, you know, aware of that.
So what would be the, the requirement? Because here, like, I review plans that have drainage from other property coming into, say, the state right-of-way. And, and individuals who are draining their property are required to maintain the drain. In this case, since the, the facility is off the state highway, the, the membership will be, well, they will be responsible to.
He's just, I believe Mr. Oliver's just giving you a warning, a heads up.
Ah, okay, yes.
It's not a requirement, it's that, when you, we got a lot of, you live up here now. We got a lot of snow.
It'll be a mess in spring.
Yeah, I used to have, my driveway's quite long and when I first bought my house 25 years ago, it was item four. And I love the sound, I could hear people driving down and by the third winter, I was like, that's it. Cause I was tired of raking back stone all the way, cause there's only one way to push.
Yes.
So it's, it's a matter of maintenance, it's your maintenance, but it's just a matter of you dealing with it all the time.
And that's a, that is a maintenance concern of taking into consideration that, okay, I see.
And with a residential driveway, you may be able to just, you know, plow the driveway once at the end of the storm. Where if you have a commercial facility and, and a need for, you know, emergency vehicles and, and, you know, your, your members of your church to, to enter during a snowstorm, you're gonna have to plow it more frequently. So, you know, where at a house, you may be able to do it one time.
Yep.
A commercial resident, you know, a commercial property, you're gonna have maybe three or four plowings for a snow event, which the, the stone will take a much, much harder on, you know.
They would probably need a man to maybe have some type of snow blower device to do that. And, and if a, if a, if a emergency vehicle couldn't make it to the site, they would probably not be having church that day.
I'm, I'm gonna guess an emergency vehicle up here would probably just stay on Circle Drive, fight a fire or anything else.
Yes, yes.
And I'll just, Chris, those were excellent points, cause I'd forgotten with commercials, plow more often. I'll also just tell you that I've broken a couple of snow blowers by having item four stones locked in and breaking my blade. It's, it's just, it's life in the Northeast.
And ice melt won't work as well on a stone.
No, no.
I told you we're helpful.
You are.
Ms. Dexter, comments?
I would also like to welcome you to Hyde Park, I think that's great, I've been seeing that empty building for years. I think it's great that you have found this as your new home. And I would just take what we're saying here as, as helpful tips to try to help you speed up through the process. There is a lot, there, you know, you're going for a special use permit, which has its own requirements. And it might seem a little daunting, but you just need to stick with it and when they do give you ideas, try to incorporate them. And especially, and just trying to get the, the plan set. Once you can get that, then we can do the referrals. We can't do anything until that gets more in line with what's required, cause they'll just all come back to us saying incomplete.
Yes.
So take them up on their offline meeting opportunities and again, welcome to Hyde Park.
Thank you.
Well said, Ms. Wasser?
Yes, I'd also like to welcome you and say I'm glad to see this proposal. My only comment, I, I agree with everything that I've heard, I think those are all important points, is to, to take another hard look at the, at the parking spaces. I think 60 people, 36, you have 36 spaces now without allowing for visitors or handicapped. So I actually think you may need some more spaces now, but I'm gonna let you take a look at that and figure it out once you, once you lay out the handicap and visitor spaces. So that would be my only comments, make sure you take another look at that.
Good comments as well, Mr. Pickett?
We welcome you and the recommendation is you, to expedite as soon as possible and try to keep it as economical as possible as to get with Pete and Ms. Moss and Michael and get together in one or two offline meetings and I think they'll help you out.
Yes.
More than, more than it appears.
And I agree with everything that my, the fellow board members have said and we are thrilled to have you in Hyde Park.
Thank you.
Did, I, I think we got at this another way, but will you be having parties and events in the church?
Parties.
Weddings, weddings.
Birthday parties, I mean, things for your parishioners, cause again, I think that's gonna impact your parking as well. So you don't need to answer right now, think about it and with your next submission, let us know yes or no.
Yeah, well, I mean, weddings, weddings are welcome and typical for congregations.
Yes.
Well, weddings, I mean weddings in the church, but in the party room, will you be having all these guests there using the bathroom? Those kinds of things, I think that's what we need in your, in your next submission.
Right, now, the congregation's like 50, so there is.
Right, but like weddings invite more than just a congregation.
That is not accounted for now, that is proposed.
Right.
Yes, the 90 people we're looking.
Trying to get you to think of maximum.
Instead of thinking, designing for 50 people and come back next year to add, so let's just, let's just do 90 now.
Yes.
One third more than what we need.
That's why we're up here because we might plan on the future.
But in a year or, yes, try to, try to project out what's your maximum. That way you've planned for it and you're, and you're good.
Yes.
Yes.
It would have been very helpful to have this gentleman at, at the meeting, that would have been.
Yep.
Yes.
Well, that's why he's offering to meet with you now.
I did call the building department once to find out if there was someone I would meet with and said, no, not now. So it would have been.
Well, but they're, they're not part of the planning board.
That's a different department, yeah.
Mr. Westerman usually likes you to start the process with us first. Because he deals with the interior and we deal with the site, the, how, how it works on the site, the exterior of it. So, but I think that now that you've started, you can probably start getting some with us, you can probably go back to them and try to set up a meeting as well.
Yes.
So do you, so I guess what we're gonna do is wait until we have a little bit more data on the plans? And then do you wanna try to set up a meeting in January?
Sure, I would say if you just schedule through Tad, Moss, and then I'll make myself available on 3, 3 and early January.
So I have an email of sent.
I can give you, I can give you, I can give you my card too, in case you wanna call me for anything in between or like, you know, email.
And the only, the only, the only email I saw listed on the application was Pastor Mumbow's. So we might wanna have Mr. Taylor's as well so we can work around and set up this meeting. Oh, you do, okay, perfect. So I'll conclude by saying, you've had a lot of information from that, your data request, but we can review this in a, in a meeting offline as well. And I also want to echo my colleagues to say welcome to Hyde Park and to a resident, I don't know how long you've lived here, but glad you're living here. It's, we, we like our town, that's why we're up here in the first place, devoting our time to it. And we try, really do try to be a helpful board, we'll get you through the process so that everything is copacetic and ready to go. You may have more issues with the building department than you do with us, I'm being honest, because you, when this was a daycare center, you know, the building code changes constantly, so does fire code. So I don't know, since this is a place of assembly, what's gonna be required under Mr. Westerman. That's why you should get, I, I would suggest you contact again and say, we've started the process of the planning board, we'd like to meet with the building inspector, just to have an idea of what your future possibly be.
Probably have a joint meeting if we want, I mean, maybe have, you know, Don there at the same time.
Mr. Westerman will frequently come to our meetings.
The one thing that's popping into my mind is fire suppression.
That's what I was saying, that place of assembly.
Because we've had, we've had the unfortunate place of worship have to come back because they went downstairs after getting site plan approval and found out that they needed fire suppression.
Sprinklering.
Sprinklering.
And then they had to have exterior tanks shown and the tanks are required to be shown on the site plan, et cetera. So that's why I said, maybe we can, we have some dates in mind and times, then we can go down and talk to Don as well.
If I can make a suggestion, the first offline meeting may be better with just Pete and a few members of the board. And we can tighten it up a little bit, give them a little bit more direction and do the second meeting, including Don. This way, there's more.
Or just have two times, two meetings on the same day, starting with us and then bringing Mr. Westerman in a little bit later on, that might, that, that might be better.
Yes.
So.
I was concerned about handicap parking and when I spoke with Ms. Moss, she mentioned that it was optional and.
I wouldn't know, so ADA parking is, is not governed by our code, it's governed by the federal government as well as the building code. I know that it, where they're required, they must be shown, they must be located nearest the main entrance. But I was not aware that any organization, including religious, were exempt from ADA.
I didn't think, I didn't think. I didn't think, I didn't think anyone was exempt from it, because the ADA requirements are...
That's why it's at the federal, right?
There's been some misunderstanding, I mean, their whole part is part.
Misstated or...
It's not optional.
There's zoning requirements.
Yeah, we're not required, nothing in our code says you must label it, or mother, I'm sorry, nothing that, we don't dictate how many ADA position stalls there are, et cetera, but you do have to label it on there, because we know that it has to be on, but...
For this year, we will have...
I figured, you just have to label it.
I think we have a minimum of four.
Right, so it'll have to be shown on the plan, yeah.
Yes, we can show that on the plan.
But then there's clearance, there are wires, there's clearances for door swing, you have to crosshatch out the space, so that's why I think, you know, you don't have enough parking right now.
In other words, you have, you show, currently, the parking that's by the daycare is all the same size, and if the ADA spaces or stalls must be shown nearest the entrance, then it looks like you're going to have to change some of those that are right, existing parking, right? That's what I was mentioning at the very outset.
I think a four-foot buffer between two cars.
Correct, correct, correct. So that will, that will change on the plans, even though it's existing, unless you can get from Mr. Wa, Mr. Westermeyer a way to, to locate the ADA spaces in the new parking area, but I, as I understand it, the law is...
No, they have to be paved, so...
That's what I thought.
So, is the, is the current parking lot paved? I forget.
No.
No?
No.
All right, well, wherever the handicap spots are going to be located, they, they, they have to be paved.
We just dealt with this with, or not just, but we dealt with this earlier with Joseph Steakhouse. His, his parking area is gravel, but he has to pave where the ADA spaces are.
Yeah.
So, anyway, anybody else, other comments?
No.
So we'll, do you want to reach out to us with some dates that you're available in January?
Certainly, yes, Kathleen or...
Yeah, and Miss Carr.
And Ms. Whitman, the planning secretary. She'll send us, she, once you send out some dates, then we can work around and see what we can get set up.
Yes.
All right? Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
We'll see you in the new year, thanks. Ah. Other business, we have a site plan waiver for a repair of a deck located 21 Roosevelt Road. This is an assessed based on the, it's within the stream setback on 21 Roosevelt Road, but we have a recommendation from Ms. Moss, it's just a repair. Anybody have any questions? Nope, who has this file?
Site plan waiver, town code section 108-9.4C2, December 19th, 2018, resolution 2018-74, whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the request for a waiver of site plan received by the department, by the planning department on December 4th.
Second. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is another waiver request, this is from Mr. Neshawat, it's located 84 Hyler Drive in Leefoff, you could maybe see some of it from the other side of the river, but the generator is in the rear and not visible from any of the sites. Who has this file? Oh!
I do. Okay, Victor Neshawat, 84 Hyler Drive, site plan waiver, December 19th, 2018, resolution 2018-75. A request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Victor Neshawat to install a standby generator to the existing single-family home, and whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the request for a waiver of site plan received by the planning department on December 18th, 2018.
Second. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously again. The next item on the agenda is a release of escrow, this would be for Dairy Queen, which is withdrawing its application, Hyde Park Condominiums Waste Water and Treatment Facility, Empire Auto Solutions, Vanderbilt Gardens, Minster Veterinary, Wright Homes, Longbard May, these are both small subdivisions, and Arbor's Fire Rebuild. The amounts are shown in the agenda, so I'll make a motion to authorize the release of these escrow amounts. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
And let me sign, there we go. The next item on the agenda would be to reappoint Rodenhausen Chael as our planning board legal consultants for 2019. I sent around both the resolution and a copy of, of the engagement letter of note, the rates have not changed from the prior year. Who has this resolution?
I do. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, resolution to reappoint Rodenhausen Chael as legal consultants for 2019, resolution number 18-J, whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby authorizes the chairperson to sign said contract to engage Rodenhausen Chael for the year 2019.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, and actually, I'm going to just note quickly, that as of January 1st, there'll be Rodenhausen Chael Palodoro.
Congratulations!
Oh, that's great!
Victoria's name will be up in lights.
Ooh!
Rodenhausen Chael Palodoro.
Up in, in one downward-facing, non-glaring light. Good for you!
And the pea can't be bigger than ten inches, and...
Seriously, congratulations, why'd you want to spring us, spring that on us tonight?
Because I just realized I should have added it to the...
Congratulations.
Dad, he says, um, that's missing something.
Yes, it is.
Congratulations.
Great. The next item would be a motion to reappoint CPL team, no longer Clark Patterson Lee, as their engineering and planning consultants for 2019. Again, the only change from the prior year's rates would be an occasional charge for mileage? Is that mileage for special meetings or something, or...
No, I mean, it's just kind of a new thing, it would be, it would, it would be more if I had to go to a site to look at a site, not to come to a planning board meeting.
No, 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 Victoria occasionally does, it's for special things, that she will charge occasionally for...
Outside of the normal.
Yeah.
Yeah, not regular meetings.
Yeah, no, I mean, not regular meetings, so it's going to be minimal, but it's just something that's kind of a new policy.
That CPL team wants you to do.
Because I charge them mileage now, because I don't have a company vehicle anymore, so it's my personal vehicle, so, you know, which, which, I guess, it's just a policy.
No, 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 it's just, that, that's interesting, that's all, okay. And, and you have this resolution as well?
I do. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, resolution to reappoint CPL team as planning and engineering consultants for the year 2019, resolution number 18-K, whereas, whereas, now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby authorizes the chairperson to sign said contract to engage CPL team for the year 2019.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, thank you.
And I just wanted to quickly note that the town board reappointed Mr. Pickett for 2019. Thank you for agreeing to serve again, and they also reappointed, I believe it was Victoria Kane as our alternate, and they appointed some new CAC members who were here tonight for a CAC meeting. We have some people, we have more people interested in working on the town, which I think is fantastic.
That's great news.
And the last resolution I'm going to introduce. Resolution designating planning board vice-chairperson for the year 2019, resolution 18-L, now there, now be it resolved that Ann Dexter be designated the vice-chairperson of the planning board authorized to conduct meetings of the planning board and to sign final plots, site plans, and related documents, including invoices and correspondence on behalf of the planning board in the absence of the chairperson. Make a second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ann, for agreeing to do this one more year, congratulations. And that brings us to adjournment, but before we do, I want to congratulate the board and our consultants on excellent work this year, it's been a banner year.
Yeah, a lot of stuff this year.
You can see it around town.
You can see it around town, for the first time ever, we actually are in the black, you can believe this? The planning board, we, I have a budget, and our budget, every year that I've been here, has never, our, our, our revenue, so to speak, or the fees we take in, et cetera, have never exceeded our costs, and for this year, we actually produced a positive bottom line for the town, and that's thanks to all the applications we've had. I know, look at Liz, she's shocked, and I want to personally thank all my colleagues up here, because this is, as I know, this can be tedious and long hours, but all of you have created the hot bench, as I like to call us up here, meaning you all read the material in advance and have excellent questions, excellent comments, so this is how we keep our town moving forward correctly, is by having dedicated, caring people like yourselves, so thank you.
Thank you.
Making a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for televising.
Cheers and Merry Christmas, everybody.
Don't forget to sign.
Oops, that's right. Of course, it's an annual, it's an annual tradition as well.